Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Board Work Session for May 23rd, 2023. If I could have everybody please rise for the pledge of the flag. Ed, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could all please remain standing for a moment of silence, and please keep in your thoughts and prayers, all of our police, fire, ambulance, and EMS, and a special thought in your thoughts and prayers for our fighting men and women overseas who keep us safe and keep our freedom free. Thank you. Amen. Okay, just a few quick opening remarks. We had a great event on Saturday. It was the Women of Distinction Award for Putnam and Westchester. We had proposed Cindy Smith, who is the curator of the St. Mary's Food Pantry. She does a wonderful job, and she assists all the other food pantries, and they assist her in providing food for our needy. And Sarah Wilson, thank you so much for what you do also. And congratulations, Cindy. We also had the Follow the French reenactment that was at the Grange Fair over the weekend. It was a nice showing. Unfortunately, Saturday was a bit of a rain out. It wasn't even a bit of a rain out. It was quite a rain out. But the troops were there in their full regalia. We had George Washington there. He was an interesting fellow. And they actually had, I guess you'd call them a musket brigade where they actually camped out and did some shooting and so forth. They really weren't shooting. They were just letting the gunpowder go. During that same time, we had the blue masks that St. Patrick's had at, the KFC put on, not KFC, K of C, Knights of Columbus, that put on up at St. Pat's for all of the police, fire, and ambulance. It was a beautiful ceremony. Father Ryan did a wonderful job, and they had a nice little get-together afterwards. You know, you could chat with some of the police officers, fire, and ambulance that were there. And shout out to Chief Graves of Mohegan Fire Department on his inspection last Saturday also. Saturday, the rainiest of the days, we had quite a bit going on, but it was a good turnout for him. Not too many people looked at the trucks because they didn't want to get wet, but it was a great day. So that kind of sums up what I have for you. We're going to go right into our open session now. MTA Radio Communications, we're going to have our chief, Robert Noble, Tim Kolkman, Lieutenant, Sergeant Craig Scatola, John Valieri, I hope I pronounced that right, John, and he's a captain with the MTA, and they're going to give us a project update. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Supervisor, Town Board.
Good evening.
All right, thank you for having us, and I'm going to give you a spreadsheet that has a whole lot of numbers up here. Just pass it to your left and your right. It's off for the Town Board.
Thank you.
All right, so you're going to hear from a few folks that are much more educated to this than me. I'm very good with the law and a lot of different things, but sometimes you got to know when somebody's a little better. And my left, Sergeant Craig Scatola of the Yorktown Police Department, he's done an excellent job trying to find us a new radio communication system because ours, quite honestly, we've been fortunate the last four years when we started down this road that it's still working and allowing us to communicate with each other via radio. And to my right is retired Captain John Valorelli, who basically built the MTA radio system as it exists right now, and he can speak to that and to the opportunity that the town has to be a part of the MTA radio communication system, which I believe comes to a, the town will realize substantial savings by joining in with the MTA. Obviously, there is some cost to this because, again, as Sergeant Scatola will tell you about our system, and see that, we've got our new lieutenant, Tim Kolkman. He's right in the mix with this, and he's learning by fire as well. But we've been trying to research the last few weeks since we've pretty much identified that we'd like to go with the MTA, costs that would be involved with the project. And Lieutenant Kolkman and Sergeant Scatola doing a lot of work and working with our town comptroller in the back there, Pat Caparal, trying to do the best we can for the residents of this town. But, you know, quite honestly, it begins and ends with public safety. If you're not safe, you don't really have anything. And as we've seen with the storms that have rolled through this town and challenged our ability to communicate with each other effectively, this is something that's been overdue for the last several years, and we need to make it happen. And I think we found a way to make it happen this evening. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Sergeant Craig Scatola.
Chief, I just have one statement question. This, there's a major radio failure about two weeks ago on a Friday, I believe, right? That during cops and phones.
That was Monday, May 15th.
It was Monday, okay.
Our guys, yeah, they couldn't talk to each other.
They were talking to the police cars on a portable.
Yes, yeah, our consoles, one of the consoles is just about shot. And if one goes, the other one's probably about to. So that would be the first thing that would be replaced. But again, you're going to hear from Sergeant Scatola and Captain Valorelli right now. And there's also one other person I'd like to thank because the person who put this in our ear, the potential for this to happen, he's in the crowd tonight, and that's Jay Kopstein. All right, Jay also speaks this language very well that Craig and John speak, and he's, he was the first one that basically introduced me to Captain Valorelli, and I'm grateful that he has because, again, he's been relentless working with me to make this happen. We started this in 2019, and we're getting, I think we're there, but I thank him for sticking with me, and it's been a pleasure working with him. So with that, Craig, would you come up and give them a brief breakdown of our system as it exists right now?
Hello, everyone. So, like the chief explained, our systems at the point, our radio systems at the point where it is beyond end of service life. We are using equipment that was installed, I found some old records in 1998, and it's still in service today. So if you imagine a computer or a police car or another piece of equipment, very few things are still being used today from 1998. So in 2023, we need to make a significant improvement. Like the chief said, we've been working with Captain Valorelli through Jay Kopstein, and we certainly appreciate the introduction, and we feel that this is the best, most cost-effective alternative or answer to the problems that we're facing. Like the chief said, our consoles are at the point of just about failure. The radio system is well past the end of life. We're constantly having to reset it, and it's really become a safety issue for the officers out on the street. So I don't know if John wants to come up and speak a little bit about the, to the radio system, the MTA's radio system, but like I said, we're really looking at this as a kind of a no-brainer. We specced out replacement systems in 2018 through two vendors. Our professional analysis of those two quotes was that they were lowballed, for lack of a better term. Again, Captain Valorelli can speak to the actual costs of what they've paid out of pocket to build sites that are similar, and then you factor in the cost of inflation over the last four or five years, and we don't think that those costs were accurate or even remotely valid at this point. So again, what we're proposing is to jump on an already existing system. The MTA has been a fabulous partner with us, essentially offering us, you know, a ride on a $45 million train that they have put out, state-of-the-art, and we feel strongly about it. We feel like this is the best way to enhance the safety of our officers day in and day out.
Okay, now, this, the one cost here is for the police department only, and then the next, the next couple pages would be for highway only, highway, water, sewer, they would, it would radio our trucks that are out there during storms or on a daily basis.
Yeah, so I don't want to speak on behalf of Dave Pagnelli, obviously, but he has confided in us many times that, you know, when a major storm comes through, when a major incident happens, the highway department or, you know, the public works, for lack of a better term, they are our partners right there, right out there with us. They have almost nothing to talk with except their cell phones. It's been an issue during Hurricane Sandy. It's been an issue during winter storms, the two winter storms in 2018 through Hurricane Isaias. It's been an ongoing issue for them, so the MTA is gracious enough, and they have the capacity on their system to bring the highway department, the war department, and all of our public works onto the system as well. So, you know, again, to answer their problem, which is even more dire than ours, this seems like the best solution.
Yeah, I remember that during, I think it was the major snowstorm in 2018, maybe, was that March?
Riley Quinn, yeah.
Yeah. I remember even with, was it Zello? We couldn't get through on the, on the cell phones, and a lot of the towers and everything else was down because we had no power. There was nothing there. There was, there was no boost. There was no, what is it called, repeater or anything like that? So we were kind of dead in the water with.
Yeah, and to go back to 2018, we had an instance where a highway truck was out on Route 35 outplowing. Some live wires came down on that truck, and that person luckily had enough cell service to call back to the highway garage and report that incident. You know, if he was in an area with no cell service, no radio, would have been a waiting game for someone to come find him. So you're talking about, again, a life-threatening situation with really no, no means of communication.
Right. Okay.
Good evening, Supervisor Diana, Town Council. I'm John Valorelli. I'm a retired captain from the MTA Police, and in my 31 years, I've been predominantly in communications. One of the things was this radio system that I was, at the beginning of it, negotiated capital monies with the agency, negotiated massive side of, excuse me, contract. So in 2015, we started the build of a regional radio system, and by the MTA's chairman, we were tasked to go out and speak to all the counties and develop partnerships. In many cases, those partnerships were very difficult because the counties had their own plans, so they didn't opt. Several did, Orange County and Suffolk County did, and then what that turned into was working with our local partners. Because what we were seeing was each of the agencies, and you were no different, were running into the same thing, radio systems at the end of their useful life, and the costs to do this were astronomical. Back to the working with the lowballed proposals when we first came in on Jay's recommendation, and Jay and I go back, when I was MTA and he was NYPD, we worked together on many committees together.
I'm sorry to hear that.
How was that, Cap?
You knew that was coming. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, so we, we worked with the local agencies, and so we had built our system out and ran into the typical issues of not being able to fulfill our complete 65-site build in the MTA service area that went from Long Island up to Wausau, Poughkeepsie, and then all the way to Port Service. So the requirement was wide area of mobile coverage for our cars that drive all through the region, and then a defined area of portable coverage, meaning 500 yards per, in our right-of-way, so each side of the rails. The vendor, L3 Harris, blew out the performance. They gave us remarkably better everything. So as soon as we started to see this, it became, interest was generated with some, the first three agencies were Bronxville, Tuckahoe, and Eastchester. So the three agencies were critically in need, and we were looking for a site to fill in some space. So we brought them on as our original partners. We've leveraged an agreement with the Village of Tuckahoe, have a site built there, but we, they were the first three agencies to come on. And at about that same time, we were talking with Chief Noble and Sergeant Scatola that long about putting this together. And I must tell you that there is, you helped us and you helped this department, your own department. We had a lease with Crown Castle for French Hill. In that agreement was a $1,000 monthly payment back to the, to the town. You graciously waived that for us, and we're deeply appreciative of the cost because if you knew what our expenses were to operate and maintain a 65-site system, we're in the millions. So we're running out about $5 million a year, operation and maintenance, and the sites' build costs are now going to be upwards of $70 million. The MTA Board just gave us an approval of another $54 million yesterday at the subcommittee meetings to continue to expand on the system. So when all was said and done, we opened ourselves up and said to the agencies, you can have free access to the system. We have a user agreement. We ask the agencies to sign, and then all you would need to pick up is your costs to subscriber, radio equipment, consoles, and any of the recurring costs related to that. The system infrastructure, we pick up all the maintenance, all the software upgrades, and oh, by the way, we invested heavily in cybersecurity. We're the only trunked, public safety trunked radio system in North America that has got the level of cybersecurity equivalent to the Department of Defense. So the MTA, we were ahead of the curve in the MTA with all their millions of dollars worth of systems. This, we were ahead of this, ahead of the curve and brought that to bear for public safety. Right now, we have probably 12 police agencies in Westchester County that are currently partners, about another eight that are currently in negotiations to and testing to see if they'll come onboard the system. We're working through agreements with Putnam County, and we, we do currently have several of your neighbors. We have Mount Kisco on the system, so we brought, through Ed Barncotti, the village manager, we negotiated a site, and in lieu of that site, we gave them access on to the fire department and DPW. Another case, another case study was Eastchester, who requested that their DPW be brought on. We brought them on and got reports back that their superintendent lives up north here, and he was amazed that he could hear his traffic going on in Eastchester during a major snowstorm. So it, we, the ability of the system for its coverage and for its costs for what we've borne and we continue to bear, and we have no problem with it because when the bottom line comes in the MWA, we all have to get, come together as police agencies. We don't see any patches on our uniforms. We just respond together, and the ability to communicate amongst us, ourselves, has just, has shown, you know, to be very important, you know, in the grand scheme of response and mitigation. So again, I thank you very much. I thank you, chief, for the opportunity to, to work with you and if any questions.
I just have one. So when there's something to be troubled, say you have to update the system, are you doing it at the main center, the USB, and then it like plugs in and then it goes to everyone? Like more of these other high-techs? Like I know now.
Yeah, so just a little understanding of the infrastructure that we created. We have both our core, we have two sets of cores that run the system that are geographically distributed, and then multiple sites that have multiple paths that get back and forth. We do quarterly upgrades under NIST to make sure that we're compliant with all the software. So all our third-party and our, our L3 Harris software is upgraded on a quarterly basis, and then that includes all of our cybersecurity updates. And then we also have, which was just approved, major portions of upgrades in year seven, 12, and 17, to do major upgrades with the hardware of the systems to keep that under the typical source.
It's just amazing how they can do these upgrades with like a thumb drive now where like you couldn't do them years ago. You have to bring in all the equipment and.
And, and the great thing about it is when this is done, we take one side of the system down, the other side stays up, and the users never see that this is going on.
That was actually my ex-1. Okay.
It's redundant. It's a good system. From what I know about this stuff, it seems like a good system. I know we had our comptroller working with the police department and possibility of narrowing down the cost because the cost is, is pretty good. It's a million... 73,300. Pat, could you give us a little rundown on what you've been doing possibly?
Line up, Pat. And L3 Harris is the hardware? CellGain is the cell service?
L3 Harris, L3 Harris manufactures the equipment for the core.
Right, they're the hardware.
The radio equipment is, is done by, is created by and manufactured by L3 Harris, but sold as a minority-owned business under the state, under the MTA's rules, to CellGain.
Right.
They're, they're their distributor.
They're the distributor. L3 is creating it.
Right.
And then Exacom?
Exacom is one of the providers of the voice logger recorders.
Service, and then Zetron?
Zetron is the dispatch consoles.
I like to know who's in the family. Come on, Pat.
Come on, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Where's the money? That's the important question, right?
Where are you getting the money?
I have it squirreled away.
Okay.
Actually, what I'm trying to do is just do a comparison right now. I don't know what forms you have there as compared to what I had gotten, but there was...
Well, it's revised.
Revised ones?
Yeah, okay, on the bottom where it says the operating cost, I was trying to do a comparison of the three-year as well as the one-year, and it's going to be, I think, a lot more beneficial for us to run with the three-year. I think there's going to be a huge cost savings to do it that way. But as far as the absolute capital, I can't help you out with that yet. I'm still waiting to get some contracts, so I can back into those.
And John, you're going to like maybe love us and like up that warranty from one year to two years before we start paying? Maybe even three years? I'm going to ask for three, maybe you can meet me somewhere at two.
I would go for five and work my way down from there, but.
As I said, when you get those vendors in, negotiate hard, just the same way we do on the mic.
Yeah, you got to go to the mic, John.
John, you got to come over here.
I'll share with you.
Okay, so what I said is negotiate just like we did.
Well, now I know who the players are, so I'll know who I'm going to talk to.
These are rough-order magnitude numbers that we took off of current contracts. If you can get a better price out of it.
Yeah, I mean, you might be able to go five years. I mean, you know you're going to have the system for five years. We've had the last one for 25 years, so give or take. So, you know, you know it's going to be there, so you might as well take advantage of it. It's not like you're going to get rid of this tomorrow or next week or next month. I mean.
Yeah, our system is under contract for 20 years. We're in year three of maintenance, so we have a 20-year contract.
Yeah, so you probably got a great deal.
Thirty percent of your life is guaranteed. The rest.
So you get a service contract with them for 20 years?
For 20 years.
Okay.
Yeah, so we really have to sit down and work out the logistics of all of this now because I've just been playing with it since Thursday of last week. So like I said, as far as the equipment itself, until I really see a contract and we can start backing into the numbers, I'm a little bit at a loss for that.
Okay.
And then working with the gentleman here to determine exactly what it was that was going to be necessary, so, so that's where we're at. But I don't know exactly what they need now. Were we like working towards one big project? So that's where we're going to have to sit down and work out all the details of that before I think we come to the board.
In a high level.
Doesn't sound like we've got a lot of time, right? With the current system, I mean, if they were down last week and they, we, they keep, you said something, you said something very, something that really caught my attention. You keep rebooting. You keep resetting the system. It's never good.
Yeah, so the first thing we need to do is get those consoles in. That, Craig, correct me if I'm wrong, we need to get those consoles sooner rather than later?
Come on up to the mic, Craig. Otherwise, we get yelled at.
We do, we need new consoles, but we, we can't just buy the consoles and use new consoles on the old system. So we're kind of in a catch-22 where we need to get rid of our old consoles, but we need to be able to, if we're going to make this move, which we hope we do, we need to be able to make that jump kind of all at once.
Can you even buy the old consoles?
No. The consoles are currently have our end of life. Our vendor says there's no more firmware updates, there's no parts.
Yeah, that's not good.
They're not good. Yeah, exactly. So the new Zetron consoles that we're looking to get are not compatible with our old system, the way it stands.
Yeah, so in other words, we can put the new consoles in, and it'll throw radio waves out, but the cars aren't going to hear it, basically.
Basically.
So we have to, it's all or nothing at all. Yeah, we need, we need that.
If you're going to do it, you got to do it. That's it.
And coming full circle in the conversation, that's how I perceive this, is it's an all or nothing. So that's where we've got to all get on the same page, and, you know, I really have to get some numbers together to come to you and say, okay, you know, we need a capital project, and this is the cost, because I'm at a loss tonight to give you some hard numbers. I can't.
Well, that's okay, yeah. We got it.
Yeah, no, just, just to know that, that, you know, that you're working with the chief and, and lieutenants here to, and the sergeant to make it.
And poor Craig, no.
And poor Craig, sergeant, to make it work, you know, hopefully to our benefit, and I know John has been working diligently. We had an hour or so conversation up in the office and to, just to go through this again because, once again, it's been looming out here since, what did we say, 2019?
19.
You know, kind of a high-level talk on what we were, yeah.
We identified the problem not long ago. We were fortunate that we've been able to, you know, avert disaster, but it's time. We need to move. And in all honesty, with this system, with the, with the prices that we, we were received back in 19 that were, you know, underbid, we believe, I mean, the number for the cap, the capital cost, right, that's, that's pretty much what we were looking at back in 18 or 19, and that's because we're jumping on his system. And for me, the beginning and end for me is that my people can talk to each other, that the service, they'll be able to communicate equal to or better than, with the emphasis on better than. And with the testing and the mapping that we've done, we're pretty confident that, that we're going to be able to do that. We had thought we were going on a different site up in Putnam recently, and we waited, 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 and we can't wait any longer. So thankfully, the captain and the sergeant went up to, went up to Quinlan, and we think that's going to work out for us, where we already have a, you know, site up there. So, and with the surrounding towns and jurisdictions, with the antennas that you have all over in Garrison, Mount Kisco, you know, you, you name it, Japp, yeah, we should be able to communicate with each other just, just fine. And the beauty of it is we'll be able to bring, you know, Dave and DPW into this as well.
Right.
That's great.
You know, you see the separate costs in there to do that. We're continuing to work with Pat to try to explore, you know, the best ways, you know, to try to do this as cost-effective as we can, but the bottom line is we, we've got to do it.
So what is the, just as a quick question, you have two Verizon internet connections. What's that for, like a point-to-point, like some kind of VPN to, to some backend somewhere or?
So the circuits go back to our two cores. So we have two sets, we have two cores, both for the L3 Harris, the infrastructure, and the Zetron system because we use Zetron consoles at both our dispatch points. So with those, that's a separate circuit, so if one fails, the other one's the backup.
So, and, and if they both fail, what happens to our system here? We still communicate internally with the local?
So there is, there is a, called a control station. It's a smaller mobile, it's a mobile unit with a power supply and an antenna, and that is connected just like a mobile radio would be. So if the, both connections have failed, that worked. We're running, we did the same thing in New York, in Queens where we have it. We've got control stations set up.
Yeah, so you've got triple redundancy, it sounds like, right?
Yeah, we've, we've laid this out. Redundancy, resiliency, oh, and every one of our sites is on a generator. So we're generator backed up in each.
And that we already have, I believe, at the Quinlan site, right? We're already generator up there. So that keeps, and, and this is probably old technology. We're still working off of repeaters, or is that, or am I wrong there?
It's, it's, it's totally different technology called trunking.
Okay.
And it, basically every one of the sites stays up at the same time, and they're timed differently. So units here, I, if I turn this portable on and I, I could talk to a unit out in Long Island. I've actually, this has LTE in it. I was in Las Vegas at the, at a convention last year before I retired, and I was walking around, I had put the LTE connection, and I was talking to my dispatchers back in Queens.
Oh, my God, I can only imagine what your house sounds like. Yeah. I have some of those in my house.
All right. All right, so we got the broad brush stroke here, and we'll work forward from there. All right, so, we got the broad brush stroke here, and we'll work forward from there.
And real briefly, Mr. Kopstein, would you like to come up and, I mean, he's the one who introduced us to Mr. Valarelli.
Hi, Jay.
Good evening. First, the chief has been kind. Our existing system is in hospice. The only way to describe it...
I don't mean to laugh, but yeah, that's just...
That's first. Secondly, primary responsibility for the police department is life safety, theirs and ours. We have investigators. We promoted some the other day. They're not restricted to Yorktown. We have canines. They're not restricted to Yorktown. Felony trials take place in White Plains. These radio, this radio system will allow communications down in White Plains. Where the canines go, I don't know how observant you are, but every one of our radio cards has got a letter in front of the number. That letter is representative of a mobilization. Our card may go out of town. It will give them the ability to communicate back and to interoperate with other police agencies on the system. It's a good system. It's built N-plus-two. It's a double redundancy system. A lot more than we have now. If you remember when we had the presentations from the two companies, that would of course us a lot more money than what we're going to spend now for a whole lot less in services. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
I got one, one other question for, for John or Craig. Now, are these, are these military, military-spec radios that they're going to take the abuse of a, let's say, a dump truck when we have it in for the highway and so forth? Or are they different radios for those?
They're public safety-grade radios. So, L3 Harris is the contractor for the DOD. They are public safety-grade. They're fielded by the MTA Police Department and other first response agencies. I would say they're, they're on par with Motorola or...
Okay.
They're as good as those old Netflix.
You agree?
Agree.
And they're under warranty anyway, right? I mean, of course, not for like, you know, if you're smashing...
You're gonna run them over, run them over in that first year, and then... No, they're, they're public, we fielded them. They're public, public safety-grade, which I would say is more so than what we have right now. And that's important also.
Okay, that's all I got.
They don't make those phones anymore. Those good flip phones. Remember those, supervisor? You could drop them anywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Those flip phones? They've lasted you for years.
Then they had the brick. Remember the Nextel brick?
All right, so we good?
We're good.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you for your time and attention.
And thank you, Sean.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll be working on this, and we'll go from there.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks for hanging out, guys.
Thanks, gentlemen. Okay, next up, thirty-two thirty-two Gomer Street. We got Joe Rena, the man, the myth, the legend, coming up here to give us a overview here. And this is for a request for the authorization for the planning board to use flexibility standards.
Hello, everybody.
Here comes the juggling, juggling act.
Yeah. See if we can manage this. All righty. Just give me a minute, please.
Sure.
Get back, did you bring your own mousepad? Do we have John Tegger here too, or no?
Don't look like it, see, no.
Yeah. Well, thank you for coming up, Mr. Rena. Your time is now over.
No, thanks.
Your three minutes is done.
I apologize. I was not expecting to... So, the...
No.
The last time that the board saw this project, well, you've seen it a few times. We've, we've done several iterations of layouts for this, and it started out as a mixed multifamily and with some conventional lots. We then went to, after a sidewalk, which almost everyone here participated in, we, we went to a conventional plan. And the plan prior to that showed access from London through an existing right-of-way, which is right, which is right here. And the road came into the property and split, both in a left and a right direction. At the sidewalk, we, we all determined, I think, together, lets you two separate accesses, two separate cul-de-sacs with no connection, no disturbance of the wetland. And that brought us to this conventional plan, which is, meets all, all of the bulk standards for the R-120 zone. It has an access off of Gomer Street, which, which accesses seven lots, and then six lots off of Cordial. Going over this with the planning board, as you could see, we've got some, two homes here, the cul-de-sac here, this home here, the cul-de-sac here, are right up against the wetland buffer, partially within the, the wetland buffer. So, in discussion with the planning board, we suggested, how about if we go into, through the flexibility standards, which allows the planning board to vary the bulk standards and the design standards, and then therefore, we could tighten up the lots a little bit, tighten up the road a little bit, and get out of the, get out of the, out of the buffer.
Joe, can you make that any bigger? Can you make... I need something. I can't see it. That's a little better.
So...
Thank you.
So, that's what this, that's what this layout does. We've tightened up the lots a little bit. They, they're not twenty thousand square feet. They're a little under twenty thousand square feet, some of the lots, but we were able to pull away from the buffer with the road and, and homes. Similarly, on the other side, we were able to do the same thing. So, the only impact we have to the buffer is on this end here where we're coming in, and we're going through the buffer here. The planning board has asked us to do an alternative, trying to pull a little skirt, to try to skirt the edge of the buffer a little more, which we will do when we go back to them, as long as, as all of you decide to grant them the flexibility standard to apply to this project.
And if you do that, you would lose one of the lots, correct?
Most likely, we would lose one of the lots. I mean, we'll play with, we, we did play with it a little bit, but chances are, we would lose one of the lots, or we'd, we'd end up with some smaller-sized lots on this side, which is not preferable. But even if we are in the buffer, you know, we could definitely offset, offset that by mitigating any, any disturbances to the buffer.
So, those lots right there on the upper part, on the, the back entrance, let's say, how big are those lots? You said, because this, this is showing if, if you did get flexibility, right? This is...
That's right.
This is, that's what this is showing?
Right. So, you could see, we have the lot area that we need, but what we did with this lot here, this lot is eighty foot wide, where typically a half-acre lot is a hundred foot wide.
Mm-hmm.
So, we already tightened this up. We could possibly, you know, push this over a little bit more. Again, we'll, we'll be approaching the buffer, but even if we move this over five feet and move this over five feet, maybe we could, we can get that to work. It's not, not gonna be the nicest plan, I don't think, but we're gonna get, make an attempt at that.
The buffer, the dot, the dash line, right?
Yep. Yep.
And as far as the water goes, is there like a plant mitigation plan after, or?
For...
Or this, this area is really wet?
Right, so we're not going in the wetlands at all. We're, we're totally in the, in the upland, or just this piece of buffer right here where this road is going through.
Right, but once we take out like plant things and whatnot in the upland, water finds...
Oh, yeah, no, no, absolutely. We have to meet, we have to meet all the stormwater standards.
Right, that's what I'm saying. There's gonna be a whole stormwater plan.
Yeah, no.
Not because we, we, I mean, I know, I don't know about everybody else, but I've gotten quite a few emails from neighbors that already have flooding problems.
Right.
And they're concerned that this will increase their issue. Is there any way to kind of try to decrease the issue in, in working on this?
Well, once we do the, the, the stormwater analysis, we can up the numbers, let's say, in the sense that we could add a little more infrastructure and reduce the impacts on the downstream side. That's not, that's not difficult to do.
So, it could be, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead.
So, it could be possible that you could reduce the impacts that are currently coming from this site as it stands to less than what the impact that it has on the adjoining neighbors as it stands now?
That, that's right. We could do that in the overall scheme, stormwater scheme. We could do that a little bit here, a little bit there, and it would, we can reduce those impacts. The only thing, you know, I, I wanna point out is runoff from this part of the site is either going west or east. It's either running to the wetlands on, on this side, on the east side of the property, or to the wetlands on that side. It's not really running off onto the neighbor's property because of the way the, the topography is, right? Similarly, on, on the front side, everything is sloping towards Gomer Street for the most part.
Yeah, that's right.
Or, or it's, or it's going to the wetlands. But really, the wetlands is actually, currently acting like a stormwater detention area. But by, by code, we can't increase the runoff, right? So, we have to reduce, we, we can't exceed the existing condition. Can't increase it. But we can not only meet that standard, but we can decrease it a little bit, like I just said.
And you're committed to doing that?
Yeah. That's easy to do.
Joe, just with a broad bro, broad brush, brush-stroke description for the folks here, if they don't understand, would you explain what the flexibility standard is?
Right. So, what that, it, it's a great planning tool that's in, in our, in our regulation, in our zoning regulation. And what that allows the planning board to do is use sensible planning practices for a project like this. Or if you recall, the Featherbed subdivision we did off of Jacob Road, we used it on that one also. And what that allowed us to do was concentrate the, shrink the development and impact area down, and, as I said, create a sensible plan, and it gives, gives the planning board more flexibility on how to lay things out. So, you know, if, if they saw a fit to make these lots here a quarter acre because they thought that was a better plan, that allows them to do that. Not to say that that's a direction we're gonna go in, but, and the other place, the other project we did that on was the, the Catucci subdivision on Strawberry Road. On that one, that was half-acre zone, and we concentrated all the lots on the north side of the property, and those are quarter-acre lots. So, and we left a huge chunk of open space to the town on that one. So, that's what it allows, it allows the planning board to do.
Okay.
And John Tegger did send an email. I don't know if you guys saw it.
Yeah.
Right around four...
Yeah, about the flexibility.
Yeah. So, he agreed to, and requesting flexibility standards.
Requesting the flexibility, correct?
He just didn't send a memo yet.
Okay, so...
What does that actually mean, flexibility standards?
So, just, it's, it's exactly what the term...
I know what the term means, but...
Yeah. So, again, it gives the planning board the ability to modify the bulk requirements and some of the town's standards. Like, like, for example, let's say they, like I said before, this lot here is eighty feet wide, but in half-acre zone, it's supposed to be a hundred feet wide. What allows them to do that? If they wanna make the road narrower to reduce the impacts, they can reduce the, the width of the road. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of benefit to it. I, I think we should use it more, to be honest with you, but...
You almost need it for this project, the way it's laid out, the way, the, the way the topography is. Yeah, it's, that's what you... So, the, the houses, again, are approximately what, four, three, four-bedroom? What are they just?
Yeah, they're gonna be at least four bedrooms. They're gonna be, you know, more in the three thousand-plus foot, square foot range. You know, nicer, nicer homes. They're not gonna be, you know, high ranch type. That's gonna be a little bit more of a substantial home than that.
All right. I don't have any problem with using the flexibility standard. The one question, the, that back driveway, that goes out onto where? Cordial Road, Joe?
Yes, Cordial.
Okay, okay. So...
The original layout, the road was in the middle.
Right.
Right.
And it was coming in, and then you went this way, and that...
Correct.
Right into the wetland.
Yeah, and it had...
Pretty close to it.
And, and, and I, I know we had some issues with neighbors that were not happy about using that.
Yeah, these, these neighbors here in Ponderosa Estates.
Yeah, using that, that emergency access road that was there.
Mm-hmm.
When they built...
This is clearly the better...
Yeah.
Clearly the better way to go. Also, this sparseness of traffic.
Yeah, because you got some going out on Gomer, you got some going out, and it doesn't connect at all in the middle, correct? They would either have to go out on, those, those cars would have to go out on Cordial, those cars would have to go out on, on Gomer Street. So... Okay. I think, I, I have no problem with, you know, giving the planning board authorization to use the flexibility standards. Anybody else on the board?
No, no problem at all.
And if they, and if they, if the applicant's committed to trying to reduce, you know, the amount of water coming off, I don't have a problem either.
Yeah. Do we need a, really resolution on this, to do this? And I guess we'll get to it at their next meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. See you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night. Get on safe.
All right. Next up will be fifteen-thirty East Main Street. Dia Hamed, Mahogany Auto, sign permit application.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dia. How are you?
Hi, Dia. How are you?
Hi.
That's Dia. I'm Greg.
Hi, Greg.
Greg Jeffries.
He's with Gulf, you know, for the imaging and signs and stuff. So, basically, you know, I don't know if you have notes. I went to, what was that department we went to last week?
The planning?
Planning.
Okay.
About the height of the sign.
Sign.
Yes.
That they said, you know, zoning would have to take a look at that and see.
Yeah, where was it? You were like five feet higher or something like that? Was, is that, am I right, or is I got...
The proposed freestanding sign is twenty-one feet.
Is fifteen feet, the pole itself.
Right.
The existing sign is from the top of that pole is another seven feet up.
Right.
We're asking for, I think the sign we have is a foot shorter, the one that we proposed it, on the same pole.
So, the same pole, so you got fifteen plus seven is twenty-two. You would be at twenty-one feet, but I think that's still past the, the, what's allowed, isn't that right?
What I'm reading here with the, with the memo from the planning board is that the proposed, the proposed freestanding sign is twenty-one feet, where sixteen feet is allowed by the town code.
That's right.
Yeah, it's five feet. There's the five feet. I knew it was five.
Yeah, if new sign is going to be significantly larger than the existing circle sign, and those are the two at each entrance, right, Dia?
Correct.
Okay. Where am I here? Circle sign, it does not make sense to use the existing pole for the new sign, since the existing pole is already fifteen feet in height. The new sign should be brought into compliance with that code, with the code. That was one thing. And the board noted that the monument sign proposed is, proposed to be redesigned and relocated?
No, no, no.
That should be whatever's on the plan.
There was a monument that was approved sometime back.
That's what I thought.
Yes, and we never put a...
There's no sign on the monument?
There's no sign on the monument. That's correct, because...
And it's supposed to, it's supposed to say, welcome to Shrub Oak or something like that, right?
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, speaking of that, anyway, the plan that was approved and had to be changed 'cause Gulf updated their image. I was approved for the existing sign, the way it sits, the height and everything. And the reason for that is the way it's situated, when you, when you're on Route Six, you can't really see that, 'cause it curves around, so I kind of need the height, so you could see it.
But they did say the site has kept very clean, but the board requests the planning board inspect the site again to make sure property complies with, uh, the approved site plan. So I guess what we have to, um.
Just real quick, if I may.
Yeah.
I wanna correct something that you said earlier. The proposed sign is actually smaller than the existing sign. The existing sign is six feet high, this is the circle.
Right, right.
Uh, it's, it's literally a, a six by six, um, which would make it thirty-six square feet. And the one that was proposed was a six by four, which would make it twenty-four.
So Greg, I don't, I don't think it's a square footage they have an issue with.
I just wanted to correct this.
So, yeah, but, but out of curiosity, uh, the existing sign sits under the fifteen foot mark on that post, correct? It sits under?
No.
No, 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 it's already exceeded.
All right.
It's already exceeded.
So that's, that's exceeding as well, okay.
So the existing sign, sign, pole, and everything, correct me if I'm wrong, is twenty-one feet, uh, they're allowed fifteen feet, um, they're proposing.
Sixteen feet.
Sixteen feet.
Sixteen, they're proposing to come down to twenty feet.
Twenty-one.
Twenty, it's, so right now, what's it at, twenty-two?
It's at twenty-two, yes.
So that's, so they're already above it, the pole itself is above the fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
It's sixteen, it's close to the sixteen feet, it's not above it.
Okay, so, so then they're, but they.
I'm looking to just replace the top part.
Yeah, but I, I understand, I understand the, uh, the need for that height, 'cause it, it is sort of hidden.
Yeah.
And, and one of the things is too, is that the, uh, the town, the planning board, when he was first, before them, they required some trees and some other things to be planted. What has happened is those trees are tall, and they would be blocking funds Route Six as well.
Correct, and I, I spoke to my landscaper on that, he says if he cuts them down, they could die, so then I would have to go buy all new.
And you keep the site nice, I mean, you know, it's the, it's really, it really is, I mean, I can't, I mean, I wish other people.
How many times have you changed those trees?
I'm gonna be quiet before I get in trouble.
Many times.
I know, I remember.
And whatever, but that's the concern, if I, if he trims those trees down shorter, he says they could die.
Yeah.
And I don't even know, that's thousands of dollars to replace again.
Are they about at their height where they're gonna be? I know that they have a certain height that certain trees grow to approximately. Or do they keep growing?
I would say they're probably gonna grow a little bit more.
Are they Abercromes?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the deer haven't eaten them yet?
No, they're deer resistant.
Abercromes, I thought that was like a smorgasbord for a deer.
No.
No?
Them and the emerald greens are the best.
Yeah, so not only like width-wise did they grow out, but they're pretty tall though.
But they can be pruned.
He says to a, a degree.
Yeah, I, I usually, you gotta prune them on a slant, but you can prune them.
Right, so he said he could do that, but if, to go short, like, that way, there's visibility for the sign. He said they could die if he cuts them that much, like, at once, you know?
Yeah.
I'm no landscaper, so.
You're taking the top, well, yeah, you're taking the top half of it.
Right.
So are you planning to change the pole anyway, or that you're, you're leaving the pole, so?
No, we're gonna leave it.
If you gotta, if you gotta stay on the sixteen feet, you gotta change the pole, you gotta, and then you gotta, you gotta, the whole thing's gotta be sixteen feet, gotta be below.
Look, the sign's there already.
The sign's there, you're gonna leave, you're gonna leave those poles, Dia?
I would like to, yes.
Okay.
And, you know, again, it was approved and previously, but then Gulf changed their image, so.
Yeah.
All we're doing is pretty much asking for the updated Gulf image.
The height was approved already.
Yeah.
When was this?
Three, four years ago.
Yeah.
It's been a while.
Right.
And I, and I thought the, um, the, uh, the actual, and I could be wrong, it's been a, a while since we've looked into this. I thought that the, um. The monument sign was approved also, right?
Yes.
Yes.
They're supposed, now, now here's, the board noted that the monument sign is, monument sign is proposed to be redesigned and relocated.
Not relocated, but maybe, are you doing a different sign on it?
He's got the plans here, I don't know if he ever set.
No, we didn't.
I, I, I have, I have, um.
So it's basically everything that we were approved for, but Gulf, I guess, got rid of their old imaging for some reason and updated it. So they wouldn't, they're not gonna spend money for.
On the monument sign, though, is that the new Gol, Gulf logo going on there?
Yes.
Correct, so that's a change, he's probably talking about.
Oh, okay.
So that's why, you know, we're back here.
It's not getting moved, though, because the, the bo, the bottom piece of the monument sign is there already.
It's concrete, yeah, that's not getting moved, that's been there for.
The stone wall?
Right.
Yeah.
No, I built that, it's.
With the electricity and everything.
Right.
In place.
Yeah, no, I saw it last night.
It's the existing base.
So it's six by four, so that, that falls into our thirty-two square foot, uh.
We have this last one?
Yeah, I saw it last night.
Where's the, uh, does it show the signage on here that you want to put up on the, uh, on the two?
Yes.
Can you see it?
If you go back this way.
See the planning board?
It's this one. It's the page before.
That's the one I thought was, we were waiting for, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
It, it, it looks big in the picture, that was the, that was the, the question, it was, it looks bigger, but it's just superimposed on.
Right, I understand.
The existing one.
So. So it's not super big, it's just superimposed?
It's just superimposed, yes, that's correct.
I don't know, I like the old one, Dia.
I, I like it too.
I'm teasing you.
Well, actually, you know, the old one on the other side is staying, I'm just redoing it, so there will be one of the older ones left.
Should've made the picture on the right smaller and the picture on the left bigger.
You know what the shame is, is that, that, that was a golf station going back many, 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 many years. And the signs, if you look at them, they're still cut out, they were made to fit the Gulf, we need it.
Logo, yes. Yeah, exactly.
Um, it's, it's made to take the Gulf image on that sign.
Exactly.
Take that, it fits right on that, so they really haven't changed that much, and.
They haven't, but that's two images ago, that nostalgic sign, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Two images ago, so.
It's probably, yeah, yeah, they, they changed the lettering, the font, and, you know, that kind of stuff, that's a big.
A little shade of orange, a little.
I don't, I, I, I don't have a problem with you.
No.
I, I, I think it's fine. We've been waiting for the welcome to Shrub Oak for.
We're doing that, right?
We're, we're still doing it?
I will do that.
Backlit, backlit, so it's white lights?
We could do that.
Okay.
The power is over there, so we could, yeah.
But I didn't wanna do nothing until everything is approved.
Dia, when was the last time they came and, and checked the site plan, checked to see how you were to site plan?
I believe within a year.
And what, what did they say at that point? I hadn't seen.
They said everything looked up.
Everything complied?
Yeah. Everything fits exactly as the site plan, the plantings, you know?
I know I'd asked John, but it was a while back. Yep, all right.
So maybe.
The comments last night about the site was that, it was just really, really upkeep, you know?
Yeah, right here, the site has kept very clean, but the board requests that the planning board inspect, uh, the site again to make sure the property complies with the approved site plan. So, um, I guess just to invite them back out there to take a peek at it and.
And who, who do I call for that?
You call John.
Tegger.
John Tegger.
Yeah, John Tegger, yep.
He's a hard guy to reach, but I will do.
Okay, let us know if you can't get ahold of him, Will.
You'll get ahold of him, he's pretty responsive.
We'll give it to Jenna and Sheldon, she'll take care of it.
Uh, what's, do, is his number public on the website where I can find?
His office number is.
His office number is, yeah.
Yorktown Planning Department.
I think it's nine six two six five six five.
Okay, so I will call him tomorrow.
Right? Nine one four nine six two six five six five, we gotta do the nine one four thing now.
So call him, set up a date where he's gonna come out, once he does, uh, what's the next step, just so I understand?
Does that have to come back to the planning board? No, at this point.
He's looking for an approval on this, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's up to you, I mean, I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
I don't know about you guys. Okay.
I make a motion to approve?
Motion. Nope, can't.
Can't do that yet.
Okay.
We did have some issues that we have to discuss on the sign.
Oh, okay.
If we can do that first, we can put a resolution on, once they do the site.
Resolution then.
For the sign, but we did have some concerns we had going.
Oh, okay.
Oh, all right.
Okay, okay. All right, so we'll have to get that resolution done.
Okay.
We'll get to John first.
Get to John first, we'll get a resolution done, and I don't have any problem moving this forward.
Thank you. So John, and after that, I guess, who do I call after we speak to John, or somebody will reach me?
Well, I, I'll speak to John tomorrow, that's fine.
Oh, okay, great.
I'm over yet.
And then once, once he, he gets all his questions answered and everything's copacetic with, with John, Tegger, you know, we'll put a resolution together and, and we'll vote on it here, and then you'll be good to go.
Yep.
Perfect, okay, great.
All right. We don't have a meeting next Tuesday, we have the regular town board meeting the following Tuesday.
Okay, so I guess we'll speak in between and see which one.
Right.
If it's next week or in two weeks.
Well, it's definitely two weeks.
It's definitely two weeks. There's no meeting, it's the fifth Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah.
It's our, it's our holiday.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, holiday.
Our Tuesday holiday.
All right, sounds good.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
And, and Dia, thank you for that recommendation for the stereo, got taken care of.
You took care of it.
Did a good job.
Tommy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Don't forget to talk about the Memorial Day parades.
Oh, yes, yeah, we should probably do that.
Before we move on to the.
Um, before we move on to resolutions, um, I was remiss in, in announcing our Memorial Day ceremonies that we're going to be having on, uh, uh, next Monday. The first one will be at nine AM, which will be at the Shrub Oak School Vietnam Veteran Remo, uh, Memorial, which would be on the, um, uh, I guess that would be the, uh, eastern.
Rear east corner.
Rear east corner, um, just off of the circular driveway by the track.
Lakeland High.
Of Lakeland High School. We then move by ten o'clock down to the World War Two Memorial, um, which is in between the library and the Lakeland Administration Building. We'll have a small ceremony there, and then from that point, we come over here to Patriot Park, where we'll have another ceremony, um, put on this year by the American Legion.
Correct.
Um, and then there's a small parade that goes down to the American Legion Building. I don't believe they're doing talks at the gazebo.
No, yeah, they'll disperse right from the, uh, American Legion and the VFW, the Lions will be doing hot dogs at the American Legion, and the VFW normally puts on a nice spread for veterans as well.
Yeah, it's the, that, that is eleven, um.
Eleven o'clock ceremony?
Ceremony here.
Eleven thirty parade start.
So, it's all pretty short, um, and I think it takes us longer to walk down to the Legion than it does to actually have the ceremony, so, uh, that's, that's that. So nine AM at Lakeland High School, ten AM at the World War Two Mem, uh, Memorial Monument between the library and the Administration Building. And here, behind Town Hall in Patriot Park at eleven for the ceremony, and then the small parade down to, um, the Vi, I'm sorry, the Legion Hall, and that's that. They're nice, they're nice, small ceremonies, and it, it gives us a chance to remember our fallen, that keep our country, that had ke, kept our country free. All right, I'm gonna move on to the resolutions. Um, we're going, it's, uh, I'd like for Ed to read our Gay Pride Month resolution, if you wouldn't mind.
Yes. Uh, in, in honor of my brother, who actually was a, uh, an activist for equal rights, uh, at SUNY Stony Brook back in the seventies. Uh, and he was running the Gay Student Union, uh, you know, it's something that, that, uh, it, it was always poignant to me on how his goal was equality. It was not, um, it was not labeling, it was not to have, you know, a different set of standards. He just wanted to be Mike, you know, and then, and I think it's extremely important that, that we remember that when we, uh, when we celebrate Pride Month and when we talk about it. Uh, so, uh, into the resolution, whereas the town of Yorktown recognizes the many contributions to our community, county, state, and nation by lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and questioning LGBTQ. Uh, individuals which have included advancements in business, medicine, law, education, music, sports, arts, and culture. And whereas members of the LGBTQ community come from all parts of our community, regardless of color, ethnicity, religion, economic status, or gender. And whereas June is recognized as Gay Pride Month because it marks the fifty-fourth anniversary of the Stonewall Rebellion. An event accepted as the single most important event leading to, into the fight, uh, for LGBTQ rights in our nation. And whereas following the Stonewall Rebellion, demonstrations, calls for equal rights, and freedoms from members of the LGBTQ community were made across the country. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the town of Yorktown recognizes and celebrates June as Gay Pride Month. And be it further resolved, the town of Yorktown recommends, uh, recommits itself to support and accept all members of our community, regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, or preference. And be it further resolved, the town of Yorktown stands as a community of hope, generosity, and acceptance to everyone, regardless of religion, race, national origin, ethnicity, culture, or orientation.
Thank you, Ed, could I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Again.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thanks much, Ed, and thank you for the, uh, the story about your brother, that's, that's very nice. Okay, we're gonna move on to, uh, our, our resolutions here. Okay, from the comptroller, authorize the town comptroller to accept a decommissioning bond pursuant to Town Code, Section three hundred dash eighty-one point four G one for Kichwan Solar Farm Project. And. One second here. Solar Farm Project. Okay, authorized comptroller also, also to process the following budget transfer, fifty-six hundred dollars, um, to remove a tree, uh, a large fallen tree. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, from our engineering department, uh, author, authorized release of bond number WPFSWPPP dash zero three six dash twenty to Mr. Luis Carlos Piers. And also, we have a, one from the engineering, I believe it would be also, is Dan here? No? Okay, it's a town board resolution approving, this was on our, on our, um, uh, public hearing last week, to, um, motion to approve the Jennings Stormwater and Wetland Permit, WPBSWPPP three eight dash twenty-two of the town of Yorktown, it's for a pool located seventy-nine Somerston Road in Yorktown, New York. Can I have a motion on those two?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, from our highway department, authorize the highway superintendent to deem the following equipment obsolete and sold at auction by Absolute Auction and Realty, Inc. And there's a number of vehicles here, and that can be, uh, seen at the website for Absolute Auctions. Um, authorize the highway superintendent to make change, changes for the master fee schedule under the Highway Department section. Can I have a motion on?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, for the library, authorize the library director to accept a, uh, accept a state municipal grant, it's a SAM grant. Um, that would be for lighting upgrades and certain things on a new circulation desk, the library, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, from the supervisor, authorize Barton and La Judas, DPC, to perform an environmental review for Garden Lane Apartments. Um, and then we have a resolution to authorize Barton and La Judas, DPC, uh, to perform an environmental review for the MJM Land Development Corp. subdivision application. And then authorize the supervisor to. And then authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement with Westchester County for transportation services. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, town board, authorize the town board to issue a home rule request effective May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three to support, uh, and passage of Assembly Bill A point six seven zero one A, Senate Bill S point six seven four three A. Uh, the town desires to discontinue as parklands and lease at fair market value to Homeland Security Tow- I'm sorry, Homeland Towers LLC for a term not to exceed fifty-five years. That would be to put up a cell phone tower. And then we have all the meats and bounds, et cetera, here. And then we're gonna award a bid to Zebra Construction for the ref- uh, for the, uh, furnishing and installation of flooring for the Nutrition Center. Okay, could I ha- oh, no, then we have, uh, appoint Margaret M. Bagley to the Legal Department effective May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Did I miss what? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, I'll go back to them, uh, appoint Jonathan Pratt as an alternate member to the Board of Assessment Review. Appoint James Paglisi as an alternate member to the Board of Assessment Review. Appoint Stephen O. Proctor to maintenance mechanic in the Parks and Recreation Department. Could I have a motion?
Moved.
Second?
Tagged.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, uh, from the town clerk, uh, discussion on the authorization, or, uh, uh, request to, um, put out to bid for the fence slash netting improvement for granite knolls behind the, um, um, uh, soccer field there. Did you get that, the, the information on that, Diana?
You have the documents.
You have the documents, okay, so can we, we'll, we'll advertise for bid? Yep, I'll go back on to that one. Um, we'll advertise for bid, um, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, last, but certainly not least, we're going to accept, does anyone want to accept the resignation?
No.
Of Margaret Gerspurning, effective June ninth, twenty twenty-three?
No.
No, no, Margaret, we're sorry, but you have to stay. Okay? Okay, Margaret, we wanna thank you for your years of service here, um, it's been an absolute pleasure, it's been my honor and privilege to work with you in both capacities, as both councilman, deputy supervisor, and then supervisor. You've been a wonderful asset to the town, and you're going to be sorely missed, um, and we are all jealous that you're going to be, um, in sunny Florida.
We wish you the best, Margaret.
We wish you the best.
You deserve it.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, now I'm gonna have to read this, and we're gonna have to vote. Are we ready for that? Okay. Accept the retirement of Margaret Gerspurning, effective June ninth, twenty twenty-three. Resolve, the town board of the town of Yorktown hereby accepts the retirement of Human Resources Director Margaret Gerspurning, effective June ninth, twenty twenty-three.
No one's entertaining it, so.
Can I have a motion?
Motion and good health and happiness.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.